I call this meeting of the Lancaster County Planning Commission to order. Welcome, everyone. Would the clerk please call roll?
Jason Cavalier.
Present.
Joakima Kuratin.
Present.
Lynette Hinson.
Present.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg.
Here.
Michelle Richards.
Here.
Sheila Hinson.
Here.
Frances Lu.
Here.
Would the clerk please make a note on the record that Coram of the Planning Commission is present? The public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted. The required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building on the county website, and that the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. Welcome, everyone. Please make sure your phones are turned off, and let's respect the rules of the room. No hats, keep your shirts on, that kind of thing. And if everyone would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to welcome back Ms. Kuratin. Thank you for joining us again, ma'am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I pray. Most gracious Father, we come to you tonight to say thank you. We thank you first and foremost for just being God. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to serve this county and its great residents. We ask tonight for wisdom, humility, understanding, and courage to do your will. This we do pray, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Commissioners, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Show of hands. Unanimous approval of the minutes, or of the agenda? The next item is the approval of previous minutes. For item A is February 18th, 2025, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
There's a correction to both. Both of them list Chairman Deese is calling the meeting to order. So I think it was Allison called the meeting to order on the 18th, before we elected the new officers? It was Amy? Okay, so Amy, so that one will need to be corrected. And then on March the 6th, you called the meeting to order, so.
All right, let's start with the A. All right, so we have an amendment of changing the correction on the naming for calling the meeting to order. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All right, show of hands. Ms. Kuratin abstained, she wasn't here. Item B, the minutes from March 6th, 2025 workshop meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Show of hands. Six, four. Ms. Kuratin abstaining because she wasn't here again. Thank you, Ms. Kuratin. Okay, now we're to citizens' comments, and no one has signed in to make public comments at this point, so we will consider ourselves out of public comment for the general section, and we'll move to public hearing items. The first item is conditional use, 2024-2612. And...
There we go. Can you hear me? Good. All right, starting off a little bit of background about this conditional use, located off Shallow Unity Road, 22-acre site. The intent is open a private charter school on the parcel. It is zoned professional business, and the future land use for this parcel and area is municipal growth area. Here are two location photos of the site, both off Shallow Unity Road, facing the subject parcel that's near the racetrack. A little bit more background, just give it an aerial view of the subject property, so in its current undeveloped state. Looking at the comprehensive plan, it is that light shade of light blue, which is municipal growth area. On the right-hand side of the screen is that image again, showing the surrounding uses and zoning of mostly residential and commercial in the area. For the requirements of the conditional use itself, all athletic fields and parking lots that are directly adjacent to residentially zoned property must have a Type B buffer, and there also must be connectivity to that residentially zoned property, whether it be a full-vehicle access or multi-use trail. Both that trail and the required buffers are on the conditional use plan, which is on the right-hand side of the slide. In terms of the technical review committee comment, the applicant did receive an approval letter on March 7th, and all outstanding comments have been addressed. So at this time, staff recommends approval of this conditional use. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here.
Commissioners, any questions for the Planning Department?
Did we receive letters?
Absolutely, Ms. Kuratin.
Have we received any comments besides the one that is in front of us?
No comments were received prior to the agenda being published. The one that you have was received after the agenda was published, and that's the only one received for Cohito.
Has Cohito had an opportunity to speak with the people in that community about its conditional use, or it's coming into the area?
I know they've had multiple meetings with staff, but I'm not aware if they've had meetings with members of the public, but they are here tonight.
Any other questions for the Planning Department? The applicant is here. Please come to the dais, state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. Cameron Gill, 575 Mill Parkway, Spartanburg, South Carolina.
Roddy Jordan, 110 Berland Drive, Greenville, 29607.
Okay, we are here to present Cohito Academy Lancaster, 501(c)(3) tuition-free, public charter school, currently planned for 1,000 students, K through 8. Part of the Tutelage School Solutions family. And at this time, we're here to answer any questions the commission may have.
We'd like to directly, we were unaware of any comments from the public. If we could somehow get a copy or have, just understand what those are, so we can address those directly.
I think Ms. Jennifer's coming to you. We'll give you a minute to read those. While they're finishing up, commissioners, do y'all have any questions for the applicant?
I'm just curious if you all have had an opportunity to talk to anyone in the area that you're in this area, since you were planning to serve children in this area?
So we, well, you probably have better, go ahead.
Okay. So for the, we have a proposed temporary site, including modular buildings. It's not part of this site, that's a completely different project, but the school board has conducted intra-surveys, as well as open enrollment. And in six days, Cohito Academy had 200 families enroll early. So I think that would be a good testament to how well-accepted this is to the local community.
I'm not sure if it's more of a concern or a question. I'm looking at the site plan, I realize we're here to talk about the conditional use, but looking at that blind curve, and then immediately turning into the site, were there any improvements for traffic, or, you know, that's a concern. I have three kids in school, and carpool and drop-off is always insane. I realize Indian land is a different beast than here, but it would be a great change for the community and impact to their commutes.
Yeah, there are road improvements as part of this project, especially on Shallow Unity Road.
Okay.
The entrance, as you're referring to, that's closest to that curve, we will be required to install and construct a right turn in.
Okay.
That site, and there is also a westbound right turn in that we have to add into the site. So there will be some road improvements along Shallow Unity to help control traffic.
Thank you.
That's a tough curve.
Yes.
I'm going to jump in here. I'm William Heinz, I'm the civil engineer for the project. We have run-
Sir, name and address for the record, please.
William Heinz, 201 Kristen Way, Greenville, South Carolina, 29607, South Carolina licensed engineer. We have looked at site triangles for both driveways. It is clear of the curve, so there should be no concerns for a left-turning car coming out of the site. As well, the four-way intersection, I guess, as you're coming in the western driveway, is stop-controlled for everything but the entering car. So that should be a free movement, get people out of Shallow Unity Road, and get people into the site with no congestion backing up into the road.
Any other questions, commissioners? Ms. Lu.
Will any students be walking, or any reason to cross the street?
I would not foresee any need for a child to cross Shallow Unity Road. We, most of the subdivision, I mean, there's a large subdivision currently being developed to our south, Granite Falls Development. We have provided some connectivity to adjacent parcels, but nothing that would encourage crossing of Shallow Unity Road.
What is directly across the street?
To our northwest is the Speedway. And mostly undeveloped, there are some single-family, large-acre lots over there, but nothing, nothing immediately adjacent to us, any sort of development adjacent to us.
But there are houses across the street from you.
There are scattered large-acre lots, yes.
I have a question. Have you done any analysis on the timing of people entering the racetrack across the street to interfere with traffic in and out of your parcel?
Yes, we have. The racetrack operates on Saturday evenings, Saturday nights, March to October. So the large majority of the race season is during the summer, when students will not be enrolled in school. And then for the months that they are, the race nights are only on days where the school is, it's on Saturday. It's on the weekends, so we do not foresee any traffic impact or conflict between the Speedway and our school. And we have spoken directly, as a matter of fact, we met with them this afternoon, with the owner of the Speedway, and I think we are all on the same page. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, sirs. We now consider ourselves into public hearing, and no one has signed up to speak on the case, so we'll consider ourselves out of public hearing. And... Do I hear a motion on case CU 2024-2612 Cohito Academy?
I make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Ms. Kuratin motions. Ms. Hinson. Any discussion, commissioners?
I'm just concerned about that curve, with the, that entrance-exit so close to it. As I've said before, I live in a neighborhood that comes out near a curve, and I've seen just how dangerous it can be. And if you're relying on people to obey traffic laws, maybe it's different. But if someone comes flying around that curve and 1,000 children, you just need one child out there. So I'm just concerned about the placement of the driveway and the curve.
I'm concerned about the Friday night, because I know they said that the track is only open on Saturdays, but I know that on Friday nights, I've heard some noise, and people who move in that area are already complaining about it, so I can only imagine. And they've been there forever, so they're not going anywhere.
Anyone else?
Just when you say Friday nights, I'm assuming that there'd be school activities on Friday nights.
That would have been one of my questions around the timing on it, but I don't believe they actually do very much until the majority of people get off work on Friday. I don't spend very much time down there, but...
And maybe, like, again, the switching to Saturday, I don't know if they have sporting things or something like that on Saturdays. Things extracurricular to consider on the weekends, rather than just school days.
Mr. Chairman, for recording purposes, Ms. Lu, we need to remove that microphone just a little bit more in front of you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll say one thing about that curve. I go to meetings at Shallow Unity ARPR at the time. You can't go around that curve fast. You will go off the road if you go around that curve too fast. So it is, especially at night when it's dark, which is when my meetings are. So that is at least one thing, if they put in the turn lanes and stuff, it's already, the curve is even sharper than it looks on the drawing. I remember the first time I went there, I about went careening off, so.
I guess my concern is, unfortunately, living near Indianland High School and all the problems they're having with high school drivers. High school drivers don't know you can't go fast around curves, and so that's what I was thinking. Not necessarily well-seasoned, common-sense adults.
I think this was only through 8th grade, so hopefully there will-
No, I mean other people going by, not the students, but the people, the traffic.
It says K-12.
What's up, Ms. Kuratin?
It doesn't say K-8, it says K-12.
Applicant, would you like to come clarify that for us?
It's K through 8, not K through 12.
Would there be any plans of expanding to 12?
Not at this facility. Thank you, sir.
Okay. We got a motion from Ms. Kuratin to approve. Second from Ms. Hinson. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Jason Cavalier.
Four.
Michelle Richards.
Four.
Joakima Kuratin.
Four.
Sheila Hinson.
Four.
Lynette Hinson.
Four.
Frances Lu.
Four.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg.
Four.
Motion is approved unanimously, and we'll put our recommendation to county council. The next item is rezoning, 2025-0072 McDonald Small.
Good evening, commissioners. This rezoning is for a small portion of a property owned by Carl Small. The portion is .488 acres. It is located behind 831 Great Falls Highway off Edgeport Road. The access will be through the 831 Great Falls Highway parcel. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow the owners of 1831 Great Falls Highway to conjoin this piece to their property to resolve some non-conformity issues on the property. There we go. So the little red triangle shows the location of the property. The red cross-hatched area is all commercial zoning, GB zoning, and the MDR that Mr. Small's property is connected to, you can see kind of behind there on Edgeport Road. So the applicants are Gary Pacosty, who is applying on behalf of the owners of 1831 Great Falls Highway, and Carl Small, who owns the small portion that is to be rezoned. The small portion is currently zoned medium-density residential, and the proposed zoning is general business. Here's some views of the property. On the left, you can see the layout of the commercial properties owned by the McDonald Family Trust in the yellow outlines. The little stars show where they had some issues with structures being built over property lines. To resolve this, they're conjoining those properties, which will fix all but one of the problems. So this piece of property being rezoned will resolve that last non-conformity for them, so that they can market this property. Some of you are familiar with this property, it's the old location of the Piggly Wiggly, down by Airport Crossroads. The center picture shows a little red arrow where the parcel is located, behind the parking lot next to the Piggly Wiggly. And then the photo on the right is looking down Great Falls Highway toward Airport Crossroads. Sherri, can you advance this line? This is the minor subdivision plat that the applicant submitted, showing the little Z marks show where they're conjoining properties. And kind of in the middle of the screen, upper-middle part of the screen, you'll see that triangular portion that belongs to Mr. Small. They've already, if you can go back one, Sherri. They've already submitted the plat, it's ready to approve as soon as this rezoning is passed. Okay. Again, the parcel's currently zoned MDR. The closest general business parcel is located directly adjacent, that's the one it's going to conjoin to. There's general business all around the area of Airport Crossroads, and there's some residential zoning. To the right of your screen, you can see off Edgeport Road, there's residential. Can you back up to another one? So regarding the comprehensive plan, the area circled in red is the general vicinity of this parcel. It is in the growth area, immediately outside of the city of Lancaster. It receives water and sewer utilities from the city of Lancaster. It will no likely, no doubt, eventually be incorporated into the city of Lancaster. But this, since it is a growth area, this request is in line with the comprehensive future land use plan. Next slide. There's no issue with traffic counts. There was a traffic count site about 500 feet to the southeast on Airport Road. They do not anticipate any change in traffic pattern due to this conjunction of properties. It's simply to make the commercial property more marketable. And again, water and sewer provided by city of Lancaster. Next slide. Staff recommends approval of this request as conforming to both the UDO and to the future land use for the county. I'll hear for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Commissioners, any questions for Planning Department? Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. We now consider ourselves into public hearing. Nope, we don't. Is the applicant here? Did they come? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Gary Pacosty, 627 Rugby Road, Lancaster. She basically went through everything about the property. We're just looking to purchase the small parcel from Mr. Small, which will allow us to remove and demolish the cooler that was at the previous Piggly Wiggly. And that's just our plans. The property will be developed by the McDonald family, but no definite, you know, property or prospects at this time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? All righty, now we consider ourselves into public hearing. But no one has signed up to speak on this case, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. And do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
You second it, Ms. Kuratin? Okay, the motion to approve the rezoning from Ms. Lu, any discussion, commissioners? All righty, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Jason Cavalier.
Four.
Michelle Richards.
Four.
Joakima Kuratin.
Four.
Sheila Hinson.
Four.
Lynette Hinson.
Four.
Frances Lu.
Four.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg.
Right.
Motion passes unanimously. Send this up to county council. Next item is rezoning, 2025-0191 Ingram, Old Carter Street.
Good evening, commissioners, again. This is another small rezoning. It is .73 acres of property at 1754 Old Carter Street, currently zoned manufactured housing district. Requested rezoning is MDR district. The applicant is intending to subdivide this property and build single-family homes. Can you back up one for me, Sherri? This is just not working. Okay, this is a breakdown of the location and kind of a summary. The red square there in the middle of the screen shows where the property is. It is in part of a three-block area of manufactured housing zoning, which I will discuss in just a moment. The applicant is Kenesha Ingram, on behalf of Veterans United Realty of the Southeast, who's looking to develop the property. They intend to subdivide the property into smaller lots for single-family dwellings. The future land use of the property is growth area, and as with the previous property, it is in the same, it's a few blocks from the previous property, in the same general vicinity. It is in the area that surrounds city of Lancaster and will eventually be absorbed into the city. Here's some views of the property. All the way on the left, you see the zoning map of the property. In the yellow, you can see is the MH zoning in that area. The center is a picture of the existing vacant house on the property, which is to be demolished. And on the right is a shot facing north on Old Carter Street, towards Baker Street. The area's future land use is designated as growth. It is part of the transitional zone surrounding the city of Lancaster. The future land use plan was adopted in April 2024 as part of the comprehensive plan, as you know, and this proposal would be in line with the future land use plan. Can you back up one? Minor subdivision does not create a significant impact on traffic or schools. I anticipate they could create two lots out of this. I don't think they have enough acreage to do three. The access is off Old Carter Street, water and sewer provided by city of Lancaster. I debated whether we would- I debated whether we would approve, request approval of this. I have provided some information for you. One is this list of the MH properties around. On the second page of that, there is a summary of the uses of those properties and the lot sizes. The reason we came down on the side of requesting approval for this or recommending approval is of the 34 lots in this block of manufactured housing zoning, only eight of those lots actually have mobile homes on them. Two lots have commercial uses, and the other 24 lots have stick-built homes. And with regard to size, 31 of the lots are nonconforming to our MH zoning standards. They are less than an acre. Whereas only four of the lots are smaller than the MDR minimum. So it'd be a much better fit for MDR. Also, Ms. Williams and I have been in discussion about this general area of MH zoning, and we may be bringing to you a county application for rezoning that area as MDR. That would be more appropriate for the area that it's located in. Any mobile homes that currently exist can be grandfathered in, so we don't think that would have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood. Any questions?
I do. In the county, how many mobile home areas are currently left? Like, how many, how much acreage is currently left for mobile homes?
I do not know the answer to that. However, all RR and AR zoning allows mobile homes, which is a vast amount of the county. There is very little that is directly zoned MH because we do allow mobile homes in other rural zoning areas.
Ms. Kiratun took my question.
Oh, sorry.
Mine, too. Yeah, I'm just concerned, you know, the prices of housing. And, you know, you have to think about, or I do, you know, just one of the first things that I thought about was, you know, mobile homes are actually a little more affordable and how that would impact. And is there anybody who's came forward to complain or to?
No one has filed any email comments about this. I will say that the reason I spoke about the nonconforming lot sizes is lot sizes under an acre are not really conducive to mobile homes. There's a reason why in our zoning now, we require an acre for that. And a great number of lots in this block are less than a third of an acre.
Nonconforming anyway.
So they really would not be able to. They don't have the lot width requirements to place a mobile home. So it's just, they're really, a lot of the lots really are just not at all suitable for mobile homes.
This might not be the time and place to educate me, but it might educate some other people, too. Why is a mobile home, why do they deem it necessary to have an acre?
I can't answer that question. I do know that the lot width requirements that, under our current plan, are more conducive to mobile homes. And mobile home parks, which are the primary thing left that we zone MH, have lot width standards that would be larger than these lots, than a number of these lots.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Another comment about locations for mobile homes. I believe Allison mentioned that in the new UDO, we're looking at opening some other districts to allow mobile homes, so.
Ms. Jennifer, is that the existing structure, is it condemned or otherwise unlivable?
I don't think it has been condemned, but they are planning to remove it because they can't divide the property without removing it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Is the applicant here? Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
And my address is 420 Valley Springs Road, Columbia, South Carolina.
Do you have anything to add about the application?
I was listening to the questions about the mobile home and why they require the width for, with the size, because mobile homes are long and they don't really fit on a lot of land in areas now because you have to have the, meet the setback requirements for mobile homes, and they just don't work.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We now consider ourselves into public hearing. No one has signed up to speak. We'll consider ourselves out of public hearing. And Commissioners, any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry. Ms. Kiratun? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kiratun has made a motion to approve. No discussions. Roll call vote, please.
Jason Cavalier.
Or.
Michelle Richards.
Or.
Yohkima Kiratun.
Or.
Sheila Henson.
Or.
Lynette Henson.
Or.
Frances Lou.
Or.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg.
Right.
Motion passes unanimously, and we'll send that up to county council. Our next item is site development 2024-1745 Silver Run.
All right. That one is me as well. All right. Getting started with the overview about the site. It's located off Silver Run Road. It's a 25 and 1/4 acre parcel. The intent is to develop a 44-lot, single-family home subdivision and is currently zoned medium-density residential. Here are several site photos. The left being an aerial view, looking at the current developed parcel, and the right showing the subject parcel in relation to the end of Silver Run Road and Ryse Lane. Now onto the proposed preliminary plat. On the left inside the screen is a page out of the proposed plat. And then on the right is the development summary, going over the 25 and 1/4 acres, 44 homes, looking at just over nine acres of open space, under an acre and a half of park space. And the connectivity index is at 1.5. Looking at the technical review committee comments, the planning staff was that the proposed street stub needs to extend to the property line according to the UDO. Currently, it stopped shortly beforehand. The applicant has also suggested that the easement is extended to the property line, but the code states that the easement itself needs to go, that the street itself needs to go to the property line. Looking at the school district, their comment was to not approve due to the areas, the school in the area, the schools in the area are being or at school capacity. Looking at, let's see here. Looking at infrastructure in the area for traffic counts, the closest traffic count is close to a mile away from the subject parcel and is steadily increasing since 2021. Looking at public safety, it's in the Pleasant Valley Fire District. And the closest EMS station is Station 4 and 9. Looking back at schools, the schools that this development would impact would be Harrisburg Elementary and Indianland Intermediate, Middle and High School. All of these schools are in the red in the school capacity in the chart on the right-hand side of the slide. Looking at the comprehensive plan, this is designated as neighborhood, and this proposal would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The project also does meet comprehensive plan goal LC 7.3, which encourages to work with developers to have usable open space and park space in developments. For SaaS recommendation, the proposed preliminary plat is able to meet a majority of the code requirements outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance. The geographical background of the project site provides serious challenges that would be difficult to address during the civil plan review process. There are also several outstanding TRC comments. At this time, staff does not have a recommendation for this project. We're leaving it in the hands of the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. Any Commissioners, any questions for staff? Ms. Lou?
In visiting the property, I saw the offset of the entrance to this neighborhood and Ryse Lane, and was concerned about that. It seems a little bit dangerous. Wonder what staff thought.
Yeah, that would be looked at during the civil review process. And the portion of this road is currently in the process of being abandoned, and it would most likely fall under the jurisdiction of the county Public Works Department for that alignment. SCDOT has given up that portion of the road.
But if, could the, would it be up to the developer to make the alignment?
The county would be the one that would require the developer, if like a Public Works Department were the ones to require, should the alignment need to be altered.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Matthew. Is the applicant here? Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Chris Hanson, 8600 Fairgreen Ave, Waxahatchee, North Carolina, with Skylar Brown.
Skylar Brown of CEZ. Address is 2433 Silverthorne Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina.
Very good. Well, I appreciate everybody's time. I'll just make a brief comment regarding the site. I want to address some of the challenges that the site presents. But prior to that, just wanted to give a brief introduction to Broad Street Homes. I think it's relevant to this site. So you may or may not know, but Broad Street Homes, along with its sister manufacturing company, Synergy Steel, are both employers in Lancaster County. We currently employ over 50 people. Both companies will, you know, have a major role in the development and construction of the site. In fact, many of the roof trusses and wall studs we fabricated right down the street from where our proposed development is. We're also heavily involved in the community. Our president sits on the board of the Lancaster Habitat of Humanity, provides, you know, labor and materials at no cost to serve the community. I say all that just to illustrate that, you know, when you're local here and you work here, we, your reputation is very important. So we take the concerns of both staff and neighbors very seriously. Any concerns that, you know, arise during the construction or development, you're not going to be trying to talk to a, you know, faceless person out of state for a large construction company. We talked to myself or engineering team or the president of the company to deal with anything. As it relates to the actual site, many of the challenges are really just because the site's pretty narrow, as you see. There's also some topography challenges where there's some, you know, difference in elevation as you cross the site. Every site is pretty challenging these days, and we do expect that there could be some elevated construction costs or development costs to, you know, work within the topography. But even so, as we developed our plan, our goal wasn't to just maximize the density to help potentially offset those costs. We want to stay well with under the two and a half dwelling units per acre. So we're sitting at 1.7 units per acre, again, well with under the maximum that we can do. We also want to make sure we had a pretty functional park space. So we have over one-acre park kind of right as you drive in, which will serve the residents as well, which I think will be a benefit. And just finally, one of the unique things that we can do is because we develop all of our, essentially, our house plans for the site, you know, one thing we can do to kind of combat, say, the topography is, we can, you know, we'll introduce new home plans. Some may have some nice walkout basements, maybe have some taller crawl spaces. All those typically cost more, but it'll certainly help, again, with some of the topography challenges that we face in the site. So we're committed to, again, meet all the requirements of the UDO. I believe there was one last comment that was on the TRC related to the stub street. And you see on the screen right now that stub street just stopped short of it. We've since kind of already amended that plan. Engineering team, you know, has sent over that kind of updated plan where we now show that stub street all the way to the, again, all the way to the adjoining parcel. So with that, I'm here to just answer any additional questions, along with the smarter one, Skylar. And again, just appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Ms. Tinklinburg?
Looking at your grading plan and the plan in front of us, it looks like you're tying in right at the property line. So I'm looking at the adjacent homes that back up to those future lots, and I'm concerned about negative impacts that they'll experience. What are your, I heard you say there might be basements, and that's going to help with that. But tying in that close to the property line, it's concerning.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, obviously, when that topo flows, and let me back up. Topography that we're using right now is just a publicly available GIS topography, which many times is not accurate. When you look at some of the streetscape, you know, we feel that once we get our detailed topography, it's not, you know, we may not have as severe challenges. But to illustrate your point, right now, we're just showing kind of a slab-on-grade product. And once you introduce, say, a 10-foot basement, walkout basement, you now have all that additional room to grade out. So you're not really tying in or putting a wall there right at the property. So again, that's one of the benefits. We'll be able to kind of fit our plans to help fit the topography. So it's just not that drastic as a, you know, as a change to neighboring properties.
Okay. And are there also any plans? I know a buffer wouldn't be required with the same use, but are you going to do any type of fencing or privacy? What are you offering the neighbors that will have a big change coming?
Right now, we don't have any kind of buffer required. Because of how narrow the site is, you can kind of only, you know, extend so far. But we certainly, you know, look at fencing or anything, again, to, you know, help with the neighboring. That's really not an issue for us if that's, you know, if that's required. But again, kind of during this civil process, we'll be really working through that topo and how we're tying in and, you know, maybe where there's now even a, you know, a small wall needed, you know, if anything, so.
Anyone else?
That was my biggest concern, looking at the topography. I'm an engineer, I'm a registered engineer, and it is very challenging. I mean, the way it's drawn right now, on the lower part there, the roofs of those are going to be at the same elevation as the basement on, you know, look at this, like I said, yeah, that's my biggest concern is how you're going to make that work and not only be aesthetic for the residents moving in there, but not negatively impact the communities around it.
And that's, you know, relying on Skylar and his team to really work through that. But again, all we're really showing now is just kind of that mass grade, slab-on-grade, and we'll be able to, once you start really digging in through the construction documents, really work through many of those challenges.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
The only thing I want to ask, this is probably a silly question, but it said the internal streets will be privately maintained. Does that mean, does that mean the people that live there will maintain them, or?
Yeah, they'll be at the HOA.
The HOA? Okay, that will be, that will be in their HOA. I got you. Okay. I'm not an engineer, but how many streets am I looking at?
There's just a, three total streets. So your stub street, your kind of main drive, and then as it circles around the park.
But they go into other neighborhood, other communities before they go out?
The stub street will stop right at that, at that adjoining parcel. So it doesn't extend. It's just, it's there for any future connectivity.
Right. So the egress and ingress, they actually go out. Are they going to go onto a main road? Are they going into another neighborhood?
They all go through Silver Run.
Okay.
Ms. Tinklinburg?
I thought of one more. Your park space, what are you offering in that amenity? Is it just a maintained lawn? Is there playgrounds, or what amenities would be provided in there?
Yeah. One thing we've typically, that open space will be used for like a dog park. A lot of times, we've looked at, hey, do we put a walking trail in the center of it? But what a lot of people like to do is they go out there and they throw out a volleyball net. They kick the ball around. So having an open space is what we've seen has been preferred. But yeah, we'll have benches and cleanup stations and such. But we, again, we haven't really, we're going to do a totlot or playground. We may do one of these kind of smaller parcels that we have as an open space. But again, all that programming will be done, you know, kind of during that, you know, construction phase, so.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Lou.
I've, thank you, sorry. I'm looking, so you have the larger park space and the smaller park space across the street from each other?
Yes.
It just seems like a concern if kids are playing in one that they would run back and forth from one to the other.
Yeah, I mean, really, the main park is going to be, the one acre is that, is that main park, which is going to serve as the, again, where we expect the residents to, again, walk the dogs or, you know, play soccer and everything else. But so the programming of that park space is going to be more just for, you know, landscaping, again, some benches. So it's not going to be an active, we don't see it as like an active park area, so.
And do you see any concerns with the offset of Rise Lane coming out and then this entrance and exit just a few hundred feet down the road?
Yeah. You know, Rise Lane, if you drive, it's a very narrow street. Not sure how many homes are on there. Probably seven or eight, maybe more than that. I'm sorry.
Twelve to 15.
Oh, 15, okay. Again, as Matthew mentioned, if that alignment needs to be shifted, we can certainly do that. But right now, we're just making sure that the site triangles are met. But if there's, you know, there's only so much room we can shift within our property boundary. And again, if those comments come up during the construction, we'll happily shift. It's not a, it's not an issue for us to move. But again, we can only, there's not so much we can do. We're kind of restricted to how much land we have there front edge.
Sirs, both real quick. I believe Skylar Brown, right? Okay. And you were Chris Hansen?
Chris Hansen.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because y'all signed in to speak here on the sheet. And I'll insult you by calling you up here after your own.
Also, Zane's house.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, sirs. We now consider ourselves into public hearing. When I call your name, please come up to the dais, state your name and your address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak when you do. Our first speaker is Brian Dentremont.
Hi there. Brian Dentremont, 10887 Rise Lane. Rise Lane, 10887 Rise Lane. So we back up to this proposed property. Rise Lane is an issue in itself. I know you guys have been dealing with it also. We're concerned with the only one, there's really only two ways into this proposed neighborhood. One is Silver Run, which is over capacity as it is now. If anybody's ever been down it, some of you have or probably all of you have. Real curvy road. Too many cars are on it right now. The other proposed way in, not proposed, but the other way in, is through Rosemont neighborhood. Big neighborhood, lots of kids. Everybody is going to be using that as a cut through to get to 160 Ford Mill, Rock Hill. Lots of traffic going through a neighborhood with lots of kids. Doesn't make sense to me at all. We've already seen what the school situation is. Everything's in red. Doesn't make sense. We voted down school bonds. We voted down roads. Why this neighborhood, it's only 44 homes, yes, but it adds to the capacity for both. What else do I got here for you? We're also concerned about, in this neighborhood, they have a proposed road going to Rise Lane. It's an empty lot with a road that looks like it's going to Rise Lane. Is more houses proposed there? If that other neighbor sells the houses, sells his lot, I think he has five or seven acres more houses in there also with a cut through to Rise Lane? Or is it going to be a cul-de-sac? Looks like it's already in the planning, the way the plan is drawn up. So that's a concern also. So we have many concerns. I have talked to every neighbor in Rise Lane. Nobody is for this property. Nobody is for this development. We have over acre lots that back up to now, what'll be quarter acre lots. Doesn't seem to make sense either. You know, half acre more lots or bigger lots that would fit in with our neighborhood. Maybe that would work better with less houses, less traffic. Still over school capacity. It still doesn't make sense, but maybe better. That's all I have. I know I have people from Rosemont here that are concerned and want to talk to. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jill Randolph? Name and address, ma'am.
I'm Jill Randolph and I'm at 2069 Vixen Lane. So my property kind of backs up to the proposed area and I would echo what was just said and also what will be said. The area is already packed. The traffic is awful. One of the children in Rosemont got hit by a car from somebody driving quickly and doing a quick drive through the neighborhood like a little over a year ago. I go out the back way to get to Johnston and people fly out of the Silver Run neighborhood all the time. I've almost been T-boned multiple times. The schools are over capacity. The police are understaffed and they're focused more on the southern part of the county. So there's just a lot of concern with rampant overdevelopment in Lancaster County, especially northern and creeping down to southern Lancaster County. And I think like we have a basement lot, so I'm worried that as they tamp down the land to make the land more stable for basement lots, that's going to crack a lot of foundations all around, including in Rosemont. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Kirk, excuse me, Kirk Reed? Name and address, sir.
My name is Kirk Reed and since December of 2009, I've been a-
Address, please.
Oh, 1445 Rosemont Drive, Indian Land 29707. So since 2009, I've been a resident in that community. There was 334 houses planned. At that time, there was only 29. They were developed. It was a different economic time. Our community has been in the process of dealing with a couple of things, like a post office that they tried to cram in there. There's been a bunch of development in and around our community. And so I would just say that the biggest challenge that we have is roads. And in our community, people have mentioned, I just want to back up just a second, say thank you, and then agree that, somebody mentioned here that Indian land is a different beast. And I would certainly agree with that. And I realize there's a balance between developmental freedom and the impact to the existing community. So I am a resident, but I'm also, I'm here on my own behalf, but I'm also the president of the homeowners association. And so on the cut through that goes to 160 is a street called Yellow Springs. And that would be an egress that comes out of this planned area. We have had numerous issues with that, as Jill mentioned. Somebody that almost got hit. We worked with Jeff Cato at length as far as had four different studies as far as the speed, the speed limit is 20 miles an hour. We've had four speeds. We've actually at our expense put in road bumps, speed bumps, speed humps. And now we've also put in a sign that tells you how fast you're going to help communicate that to anybody who's using a cut through. People had mentioned previously they didn't have any kind of traffic study or whatever. Our sign also notates how many vehicles come through. In the last month, we've had over 20,000 vehicles cut through our community of 334 houses going directly to 160 or out to Silver Run. So it is a major deal. In our area, in the last couple of years, we've had a development, Heritage Hall, Rose Glen Town Homes. Now we have the lodges that are opening up that is going to be, I don't know how many apartments, townhomes, single-family rentals that are also connecting to our community. So you've got development all around us and we're just stuck. So my question to the developers is size, price point, is it consistent with the existing community as far as the homes that we have there? And I would also say that I hear from them that they're just out to maximize the space. And when the elevation issues were questioned, the comment was, well, it's not an issue for them. They will address it down the road. Down the road is not something that we can just sit back and watch. That is the last little piece of parcel that's at our property. And so I would just ask you to not approve this project based on everything that I've just shared. And I thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Billy Snipes. I'm at 1716 Stones Through Lane in Lancaster, South Carolina. And I understand all the traffic concerns. I live on a cut through road as well.
Excuse me, sir. Can you lean into the microphone or raise it up? We're having trouble hearing you.
Get my name and address?
You're good.
Okay. So I live on a cut through road. I remember when 521 was two lanes. We've had tremendous growth up through here. That's just something that happens and that's something that needs to be addressed by other entities other than what this land has been zoned for. I've dealt with the planning commission over the years. I've been a builder and developer here for 30 years. When I moved back home from the Navy in 92, the first thing I did is went to building and zoning and the planning commission. And there was a two-page pro forma that Lancaster County did, and it said that Indian land is growing 33% faster than the rest of the county. We knew that in 92, and now we're sitting here tonight and denying these people's right to sell the property to get developed based on the current zoning. I know there's lots of issues that we've discussed, the safety. Those are going to happen. Those kids driving fast, those adults driving fast, the street I live on is 25 miles an hour. We also put up clocks to check the speed on there. We also have speed bumps that Mr. Cato and the county has put in on our road. That speed is 25 miles an hour. We had a high speed of 85 and we had an average speed of 53. It doesn't have anything to do with how many homes we've got there. It's got how many people are cutting through there. That's going to happen. You can't, you're not going to take that away from them. So this property has been zoned medium density. That allows 2.5 homes per acre. They're way below that yield. They're just asking to be able to develop this property, just like all these others that have moved into that area. That was all raw land. I remember when every bit of that land up there was farmland. So everybody's had their opportunity to build. Now they're just looking to cash in on their land that they've held on to and would like to get paid for it as well. So I ask for your approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Julie Griffin?
I'm short, so.
Just pull it all the way down, all the way. There you go.
I've never done this before. Okay, is that okay?
Name and address, please.
Julie Griffin, 902 Woodhurst Drive, Monroe, North Carolina, 28110. I'm here tonight and just greetings first. But let me just say, I am here today as the owner of this 25 acres located off Silver Run Road. I appreciate your opportunity to present our request and your time in considering it. We're simply asking for this property to be used exactly as it is already zoned, medium density residential, nothing more, nothing less. This land is surrounded by established neighborhoods. It only makes sense that it be developed into one as well. It's the logical and appropriate use for this property, aligning with the county's existing zoning and the surrounding community. In the past, there have been efforts to rezone this property for higher density housing like townhomes. Those requests were denied because the county determined that medium density residential was the proper designation. We respect that decision. That's exactly what we are requesting today. In fact, the density that we are seeking is less than two homes per acre, which is less than our legal reserved right. We elected to partner with Broad Street Homes because they are a respected development and home building firm based right here in Lancaster County. They have approved this opportunity, approach, sorry, they have approached this opportunity with the utmost care for us as the landowners and the community as a whole. Beyond being the right land use decision, this approval is also a matter of financial stability for me and my family. Like any landowners, we've invested in this property and its value is directly tied to its intended and rightful use. Denying this request would just simply devalue the land, limiting our ability to sell it for its true worth and impacting the financial security we've worked hard to achieve. There's no reason this request should be denied. The infrastructure, the zoning, and the character of the area all support a neighborhood development. Approving this request allows the land to be used as intended while also providing housing opportunities in a responsible and appropriate way. We ask that you approve this request and all this property to contribute to the community. And I thank you again for your time and consideration. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rod Alvarado? Name and address, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Rod Alvarado, 2069 Vixen Lane, Indian Land, South Carolina, 29707. I'm here on behalf of Rosemont, as I'm one of the residents as well. There's a few points that I would like for you to consider. Number one, the economic impact. I understand that for a few, this right here is our way out. After all, they had the land for so long and they have the right to sell. They have the right to prosper. However, the liberty of the few are going to affect the life of many. At least close to 15% of the houses in the neighborhood are backing to that property, adjacent property. The adjacent property, for those that haven't been there, it is a property that sits on the top of the hill. And whenever you start putting no pores and no permeable surfaces, what's going to happen? The water runoff is going to be one of the main concerns. We have Clem's Branch right behind us, which is going to suffer greatly, even though with the retention pond there, where we're going to have some issues with stormwater, storm drain. The streets that butt up directly into the property are Vixen Lane, Ballwood, Taney, also Rosemont, and towards the end getting to Yellow Springs. We're all downhill from this property. So we're going to start seeing a lot of more water discharging there. This is just on the environmental side. On the economic side, the size of the houses are going to be way too small. I know they are allowed for medium density. However, medium density, when you compare with the houses and the comps around, economically, it's going to deeply affect us by having the house prices going down. Now, my third concern, which is one of the most important, is public safety. We have children playing in, especially Yellow Springs, which is a bunch of starter families, until eight, nine o'clock at night during the summer because they're still light outside. And we've been seeing so much traffic that is passing through and they are not respecting. So the parents are afraid. That's why Mr. Reed already exposed to you everything that has been done to try to curb this situation. But now, considering 44 houses and an average of 2.5 cars per house in Lancaster County, which is very common, we're seeing at least 100 extra cars trafficking there, not counting visitors, not counting delivery trucks, et cetera. So that's one of the issues. On top of the schools that have already been talked about, and also police presence and fire department presence. We know that the fire department station that's pretty close to us, it is very efficient, however, is to capacity. It is a small station. We condone and we help them as much as we can. As far as policing, we have Lancaster County with four, three or four deputies plus a supervisor, a sergeant, or a corporal per shift. That's not enough when we start seeing a lot of progress in there. Also, in the safety, the street, if you have driven to that, is absolutely narrow with a blind corner. And that right there, as you heard my wife saying, it is something that she almost got T-boned several times and me the same way. People will simply pull out and they will not care what's-
Time?
Would you allow me to continue just a little bit further? No, sir, you've had your time. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hanson, Mr. Brown, would you like to add anything?
Just want to add just a couple of quick comments. As it relates to kind of the size and call it price point of these houses, these are going to be very comparable to the Rosemont neighborhood. We'll start probably in that 2,500 square foot, probably max out around 4,000 square feet. So this is not really going to, this is not going to be an inferior product. I don't think it's going to, the concerns of it, reducing the value of the neighboring homes, I don't think is a valid concern. Certainly concerned about stormwater, I understand if you're living close to it. But from an engineering standpoint, those are, that's what's required. We cannot add any more flow or discharge water down to that site. That's what our experts will do, is make sure that that's all handled. It's obviously a requirement of the state and the county. So those are all, again, be addressed through that process. I think just the last comment relates to Rise Lane. We do have to show that Stub Street as it relates to meet the ordinance. I don't see really any potential to, obviously, we don't have control of any of the neighboring parcels, but if someone did come in, Rise Lane is very narrow. If it's being abandoned, then that developer would have to acquire right of way, you know, which they'd have to acquire from the homeowners, which I don't, I would suspect they would not be able to acquire any additional right of way to make that connection. So I just want to kind of point out those couple of small points as it relates to kind of the quality of the homes. We've got homes not too far from here in Bertain that are, will be similar as well. So our goal is not to go in here and just build an inferior product. These are high quality homes. I think will have a positive impact.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. That concludes all the citizens assigned to speak. Oh, Ms. Allison. That concludes all the citizens assigned to speak. We now consider ourselves out of public hearing. Ms. Harden?
Thank you, Mr. Cavalier, I'm Allison Harden, I'm the Development Services Director, and there are a couple of things that were said I wanted to address as well from a staff standpoint, to make sure that, that you were aware. The, um, the applicant did recently say, or just say that the stub outs and the places where roads are not connecting to the next neighboring property yet, that is part of the UDO requirement, that they provide a connection to a undeveloped parcel, so that future development could be, uh, achieved there if it's necessary, or if it's part of the, or fit in with the network. So, they are required to do that by UDO. Um, I also heard the applicant say that, um, there were a lot of things that they were planning on doing during construction phase, that's not accurate. Um, if you want to plan your park appropriately, you plan it when you're setting it in as part of the subdivision, so, park planning needs to be ahead of the subdivision. So, when you're talking about concerns about the parks being across the street and people going back and forth, um, the location is important, and the park planning afterwards as an afterthought is, is not something that we would encourage. Um, that may be part of the, part of the reason why staff did not come to a full recommendation on this subdivision, because there were some things that needed to put, to, to paper, but this is one thing that came out during this conversation that I wanted you to, to be aware of, that was an incorrect statement as to when it's appropriate to do that. Uh, there was other concerns about, um, things being done during construction phase. If it's gonna affect the safety of the neighborhood, it needs to be done before that, and that's, that point is here. So, if there's information that you need, or if you want to see the road realigned uh, in order to meet with Rise Lane, or if you want to see the, the park space spread apart, so that there's less challenge of people running across a street that may or may not be very heavily trafficked depending upon how it's used, then now is the time to do that. That's part of the role of the planning commission, is to affect the design of the subdivision so that it's the best possible way. Um, they do have a right to build, and they are bringing to you a plan that meets, uh, the code about size of lots and the like, but the safety is, is paramount, and that's where you come into play. You do have the ability to, to help them, uh, guide it to a better design that will fit the community better.
Ooh, don't go, don't go.
Ms. Curriton?
Um, thank you for those comments, and I am so, super excited to see Lancaster County School District actually weighing in on, um, early. This makes me so, so happy. Um, so, my question is, um, did they provide any additional comments, or was that just the one-liner?
No, they are, we're working on, on getting toward where we can have that additional commentary. One of the challenges that we have right now is that, uh, we don't have what's called, um, oh, the word just went right out of my, uh, con, not continuity, the, um, there's a, there's a process by which if a body, a representative body of a, um, of a utility or an entity that needs to have space, doesn't have the space to, to do it yet, um, it was something we had in the comprehensive plan until third reading when it was pulled out, but it is a way for the, and if you remember the name, please.
Is it concurrency?
Concurrency, thank you. Um, and there's a bill going on in the state legislature right now to provide that kind of, of regulation, but concurrency is when, if you don't have water and sewer connections, you would not get a subdivision. Um, right now, there is no rule that that happens. There is a rule that says you can get the preliminary plat and then go for the water and sewer, if the water and sewer can be done, but as we've seen in the past, there have been several subdivisions that have taken two, maybe three years to get that connection finally made, and then we get into vested rights issues with things going on longer and longer than, than they should. Uh, we don't have the, the concurrency regulation now, so, the Lancaster School District information is extremely helpful, but it is not something that you can deny a subdivision based solely on that. The, and, and it may help to give you a little bit of background in, in how subdivision regulations is viewed on a, on a perspective of totally subjective versus totally objective. Um, something that's totally, uh, totally based on code, that it has to be just code, something like a building permit is on this end of the spectrum, something where you have a total design control by the board, like an architectural review board is over here on this end of the spectrum, and subdivision's right in the middle. If you're gonna turn it down, it has to be something based on the code that's in the UDO, or a safety issue that is observed that can be, that needs to be fixed. Public input helps, but the South Carolina state law doesn't require you to take public input into consideration. This county does, um, and has chosen to do so by allowing the public input. Um, if that brings up issues that you need to have addressed, then that gives you an opportunity to say to the applicant, "We have these issues we'd like to see addressed, would you consider a continuance?" If the applicant doesn't want a continuance because of a sixty-day limitation on review in the state of South Carolina, you have to say yes or no today. And if you say no, it has to be based on something, which is part of the reason why staff gives you all the comments the staff, the other staff members have provided, as where there are challenges with the design, um, because that's places where it doesn't fit the UDO for us.
So, if I'm understanding?
Ms. Curriton, can I beg your pardon here? Can we get through order here real quick, fast? Would you even mind waiting right there?
No.
Commissioners, you have before you case number SD two zero two four one seven four five, Silver Run. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Who's the second?
Ms. Lynn.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion, please?
Sorry. Um, so, if I understand correctly, then the fact that we are saturated in terms of school, um, enrollment, that does not weigh, that's like in the middle, that does not weigh?
It can't be the only reason you turn down a subdivision at this time. That, that law may change, and if we were to bring it in through the comprehensive plan, we would've been able to do it as well. And it's not just schools, it's also emergency management, fire departments, and the like, um, any utility would have to be met. Municipalities are, are able to do it, um, because they often own the water and sewer, and will turn down a development when you can't get connected until the point you are connected. Counties, not so much, 'cause counties, um, have a lot of districts where the water district is a separate entity like ours.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Anytime. Ms. Tinklerberg?
Thank you. Um, this project is in my district, I am familiar with the schools and the traffic, I live it every day. Thank you, Allison, for all of those reminders. However, uh, I, I can't find many positives, unfortunately, um, for this site. The topography, uh, and how the layout works with, you know, the existing neighborhoods adjacent, um, I'm not liking how I'm imagining that looking, um, as well as hearing that the schools are, not hearing, I know, they're at capacity, my children are in them, um, and not only are they at capacity, they're the most crowded schools in all of Lancaster County. Um, so, I hear that we can't base our decision on that, but I do think that I need to remind the commission that we have the responsibility to be smart with our choices, and Indian Land is in the situation that it's in because of so many approvals and all of the construction happening, and the schools are at capacity for all of those decisions. So, it is preventative, um, and along with the site plan and the topography, our infrastructure is not called up yet, and if we continue, um, approving everything that comes before us, then we're not helping fix the problem, and it is our responsibility to do that. So, if we're not doing it, no one is. So, I think that just because things have, have been done in the past doesn't mean that we have to continue them. I think that when we break away from that, that, that is how we improve and progress in the right direction. So, I am not anti-development, but I am for smart development, and unfortunately, this is just not smart. This parcel is left because of all of the environmental constraints that it has, and I feel for the owners, I do, um, that it is just not what is best suited, in my opinion. So, I just want to remind everyone of that. Thank you.
Ms. Tinklerberg, anybody else?
I was just going to-
Ms. Lou?
Oh, sorry. Oh, for public safety, um, I was, I went to this site to look at it a week or so ago and cut through Rosemont. Today, I was coming from further north of Lancaster, and so, my GPS took me down Silver Run, so we're off five twenty-one, but after I did the errand that I had there, I went over and looked at the property, and again, I cut through Rosemont. There's no way I would ever go out to five twenty-one to come back up further south. And so, since there's already a problem of so many cars cutting through, in good conscience, I couldn't add a hundred cars cutting through this neighborhood. I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood for safety, and so, I couldn't want it for anybody else either.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Lou, anybody else? No one? Okay. Uh, we have a motion to approve and a second. Uh, let's go with a roll call, though.
Jason Cavalier?
Against.
Shelley Richards?
Against.
Ms. Curriton?
Against.
Sheila Hinson? Lynette Hinson?
Against.
Ms. Lou?
Against.
Ms. Tinklerberg?
Against.
Motion is denied unanimously. Thank you to all the speakers and the applicant for coming. Our next item is, uh, SD two zero two four one four four two Shadow Moss.
All right, this one is mine as well, starting off with an overview. The parcel is located off of Hilldale Drive at fifty-two-point-two-three-five acre parcel. Intent is to develop a hundred lot, single-family subdivision, and it is zoned at median density of residential. So, in terms of the proposed plat, uh, that's on the left-hand side of the screen, and laying out the site over the, a little over fifty-two acres, hundred lots, single-family residential, uh, states that will have about seventeen acres of open space and a little less than acre of park space. These streets would be privately maintained by the HOA as well, and has a connectivity index of one-point-seven-one. Here are two, uh, location photos of the site, the first being aerial view, so on the undeveloped tract, and on the right is a portion of the subject parcel off of Hilldale Drive on the ground. Now, the next couple of slides here are gonna be, uh, some, some lengthy comments about the technical review, from the technical review committee, so, uh, bear with me here. Uh, the first is that the, the site has many topo challenges, which must be overcome by careful engineering and quality construction practices, this is from our county engineer. Uh, it appears that the construction and grading will occur close to floodplain areas, and, uh, BMPs will have to be, uh, placed here that would be crucial to protect the streams. Uh, there are several areas where, uh, the site appears to drain directly towards a stream without going to a BMP. Uh, the, uh, traffic impact analysis was submitted for review, but still waiting for payment, and that's on the next slide here, talking about the TIA, was still waiting for that fee to be paid. Uh, in terms of nine-one-one addressing, uh, both, uh, the proposed street names, Cross Tie and Ozark, need to be altered before they can be approved by our nine-one-one addressing. From the planning department, the, uh, current called-out park and open space, uh, numbers don't, do not seem to line up with their correct percentages, and, uh, sidewalk needs to be extended, uh, in lots, along either, uh, lots seventy-six or seventy-seven, or lots fifty-six, sixty-six or sixty-seven. Both of the proposed, uh, street subs need to be extended to the property line. Uh, street trees that are on the plan do not meet the Canada requirements, are spaced too far apart. Uh, there are two lots that are within twenty-five feet of an intersection, and this cannot be allowed according to the codes, that needs to be addressed. From SCDOT, uh, DOT is not for allowing, uh, two full accesses in this development. Uh, the proposed, uh, locations do not meet separation requirements, so, they are asking if the number of lots can be reduced, so, two entrances are not required, and add a, a minimum, turn the second access either into a gated access or to an emergency ome. Now, moving on from the TRC comments to infrastructure, the closest traffic count is about a mile and a half away from the subject parcel, and so's the, uh, traffic counts fluctuating with around a seventy-five hundred, and AADT. In terms of, uh, public safety, the, it's in the Fire District for Antioch, and the closest EMS station is Station One. For the schools to be affected would be Clinton Elementary, AR Rucker Middle, and Lancaster High School. These schools are in the green and, uh, orange on the spreadsheet tab on the right-hand side of the page. For the comprehensive plan, it is in the, uh, growth area for the comprehensive plan, and that would be consistent with the comp plan. Uh, it also meets the same goal as the prior subdivision, seven-point-three, incorporating a usable park and open space into the design. So, at this time, staff is recommending denial of this preliminary plat due to outstanding TRC comments. I'm available, and I believe the applicant's here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Thank you for all the comments, Matthew.
You're welcome.
All righty, is the applicant here? Name and address for the record, sir.
Paul Carter, um, three fifty-two East Waterland Road, Mooresville, North Carolina. I am the, uh, President of East Lake Engineering. Um, hearing some of the comments from previous, uh, denial and approvals and those things, I think we wanna ask for a continuance, but I would like to get some feedback from the board, if I could, on the plan in general. Is that something I can request?
You can speak.
I can speak. Okay, well, most of the comments that we had from, uh, planning are, are fixable, um, as far as like trees being mis-spaced and things like that. We try to do it in a way where, if I lived in the neighborhood, we did it, we did, we missed something in there, we probably missed something in the code as far as the spacing on the forty-foot trees, uh, no doubt, but the lots are seventy-foot. We are using, um, it's a MDR, uh, medium residential, density residential, and we did not scale the lots down by using any, any means or, uh, different codes or things like that. We're going with a ten-thousand-square-foot standard code lots, so, the bigger lots, um, they match the size of the ones in front of us that are MDR to our south, and we're LDR on our three sides, north, east, and west. As far as the South Carolina DOT goes, we had the letter, they have looked at the, TIA is my understanding, I have a letter in my possession that says, uh, "We've got a couple of conditions to meet some site distance, and we have to take out the second entrance", and we need to redraw that, and that's one reason we wanna withdraw and get a continuance and come back.
Okay, is that, that, that's what you got? That's okay, that's fine. Thank you for your comments. All right, we now consider ourselves in the public hearing. No one has signed to speak, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Oh, duh, 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 duh. Commissioners, you have before you case SD two zero two four one four four two Shadow Moss, do I hear a motion?
In an effort to get it on the floor, I motion to approve. With condition, with, is that right? Oh.
Yes, we're continuing.
Thank you. Uh, in an effort to get this on the floor, can I, uh, don't you approve conditionally? Motion to continue, thank you. Do I get to ask questions?
Somebody has to second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion around that, Commissioners? Show our hands for a motion to continue. Motion is unanimous. We continue, is it sixty days?
It's automatically to the next meeting unless we've set a different date.
Okay, so, we'll ask applicant- So we'll ask applicant then, the next meeting? That's 30 days from now?
Yes.
Okay. 30 days from now, continuance. Thank you, sir. All right. Our next item is new road name 2025-0375 March Group.
That's me. This is an administrative item, which does not require a public hearing. You have in your packet the application and list of road names that Sandra submitted to us from E91 addressing. All of these are from preliminary plats and civil plans. And we have names for the exchange, for Silver Run. You heard Silver Run tonight. If Silver Run does not end up going forward, those names will go back into rotation, so there's, there's no issue with that. Shot, some names for Shiloh Woods, and also for Roslin. 911 addressing has reviewed all names against existing road names and naming conventions, and all are satisfactory. All roads named above will be privately maintained. Staff recommends approval of the above road names.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, dookie. Commissioners, before you is new road name 2025-0375. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Richards, Ms. Tinklinburg. Show of hands for the motion to approve. Motion is unanimous. And?
Next, we have, we're moving on to other. We have the CIP review with Jamie. I'm going to load up her deck here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Jennifer. Can you all hear me, or am I not quite in? Am I in? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission staff. My name is Jamie Purvaznak. I am the budget director here at Lancaster County, and tonight you will be receiving a presentation for information only on the 10-year capital improvement plan. And you should hopefully have a deck in front of you. It may have been changed slightly since it went out in your packets. Oops, there we go. Tonight's agenda, we're going to provide you with an overview of the plan and a timeline for revising the plan. Then we will present you with a list of projects for your review. Also, discuss CIP funding, and then close with next steps and any questions that you may have. Oops, I don't know what may be happening. Okay, here we go. This first slide is just the 50,000-foot levels to level set you on what is capital planning. We thought we'd do some type of visual here, the who, what, when, where, and why of capital planning. So if we start with why and the so what question, why is this important? Part of capital planning is to build and maintain a thriving community, and that's, if I may, that's probably why you guys are sitting here on the Planning Commission, is to be a part of that. And also, part of capital planning is, an important, essential part, is building and maintaining infrastructure to serve the residents of this county. Typically, who is involved in the capital planning process? The residents, you all are residents, but you're also members of the Planning Commission. Council is a very important role in the capital planning process as they are appropriating the dollars for the capital projects. And county staff, those of us that are subject matter experts that are working in the background to really manage these projects. Capital plans are typically 10 years. Ours is from 2022 to 2031. We're in the dead center of the plan. We revise it annually as part of the ongoing budget development process, or the annual budget development process. There is no monetary commitment. It is a financial planning tool. So the monetary commitment comes when the board adopts an annual budget ordinance, and that's usually in June. And then how are capital assets typically funded? And there's a variety of ways that capital assets are funded. You could borrow the money. Sometimes you see general obligation bonds, you may see that on your referendum as well. Other tools are called installment purchase agreements for rolling stock. You can pay for capital assets through the millage, impact fees, or you could use any savings, reserves, what you may hear the term fund balance. So that's another way to pay for a capital asset. For us, how we define a capital asset is if that project or that piece of equipment is $100,000 or more in value, and also if it has a useful life of over five years. So think buildings, think roads, think that sort of type of project. And this is a summary slide. So when, when you think about a capital improvement plan and capital planning, it is a financial planning tool. There is no fiduciary responsibility in the out years, usually that first year in a capital improvement plan, or the budget year is the capital budget. We adopt capital projects in our annual budget, so we don't have a separate capital budget here, or capital project ordinance here at Lancaster County, but if you've been involved in other jurisdictions, you might have heard those terms. And again, various funding tools. Also, I didn't mention the capital project sales tax, but that is a big special revenue source that we fund projects with as well.
Let me get it for you. I'm not working on this.
Maybe a battery, maybe a battery thing. The timeline for revising a capital improvement plan, as some of you are familiar from last year, I spoke with you all last year about this time. But typically, we would come to you March, April, and at that point, we would present you with a list of capital requests for a possible revision to the 10-year CIP. So that's where we are in March. And then in April, I will be back to talk with you, help with Allison as well, will help to do an exercise. Whoops, there it goes. I can just talk to you as well, if you need me to just talk to you. Do you, do you guys have a deck in front of you to keep going?
Yep.
Okey-dokey. So the timeline, we're on, this is slide five. I don't know what page number it is in your agenda. There we go, five as well. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Henson. So as I was saying, in April, so today is information only, we are not seeking any action from this body today. You're just receiving the projects and taking in the information. But in April, we'll come, I'll come back, and you'll have the exercise, those of you participated in it last year, where you will rank order the projects with the lens of the 2040 comprehensive plan in mind. And so I think Allison did a great job setting that stage last year for you, so we hope to do that again, to kind of draw those lines for you. And then also, Mr. Marstol, our county administrator is doing this exercise as well, ranking projects. And council had their retreat in February, so they formalized their priorities for the annual budget, and so he'll use that lens, and then also his vision of which projects and the prioritization. And so we'll layer those two priorities together, bring them forward to council for them to consider and possibly adopt a revision to the current capital improvement plan, and that takes place as part of the FY '26 budget process. So that's the timeline, and this is a visual, for those of you that are visual. We have done the first three steps with the check marks, where staff, they are the subject matter experts in this area, they've reviewed their capital needs, they've provided us information in quotes on the types of projects that they would like to see in the capital improvement plan, submitted it, and the folks that did submit capital requests, that happened in November and December, and then finance, budget staff reviewed, vetted the information, and here we are, where the two red stars are, coming to you all with the list, which you'll see in the next few slides, and then Mr. Marstol will do his exercise. So we're in the developing stage. And then, of course, we'll close it out with council possibly adopting a revision, and then, and then it swings back to staff who provide the ongoing project management, doing bids, making sure projects come in on time, under budget, et cetera. And so this is your workload, the lay of the land. You're on slide seven, if you're following along. There are 21 projects that we will be bringing before you for the exercise of prioritization, five of which are currently approved by council and live in the current capital improvement plan. However, we, we, us in council, have not identified a funding source for these projects. So we have those for your review. And then we received, we, budget staff, received 16 project requests for the FY '26 budget. So that's a total of 21. The dollar amount is 29.6 million, and we have cut the 21 projects or categorized them into what are public safety projects, and then general government, with the majority of that 29.6 attached to the public safety projects. So you've got 19 million in public safety-related projects, 10.6 in general government to make the 29.6. Whoops. Okay. So we'll take the first cut of public safety projects, so the following slides, it'll be the same rhythm, where you'll see in that first column, the departments, what the project is, what the request amount is, of course, these are unfunded, and then the project status, status. So for example, EMS, emergency medical services, they have three, three buildings. We've got the dollar amounts. They, council, they have been approved, they live in the current capital improvement plan, however, they are not started because we have not identified funding, and council has not appropriated funding for these particular three projects. And then likewise, we've got fire services next. It's a brand-new request from Mr. Player. Indianland Consolidated Fire Service District. Those of you that sat on this body last year saw this particular request. I know it was a while ago, but we brought forward to you Station 3 construction. Chief Nicholson did his homework. He went back to the drawing board and submitted a revised request. So he adjusted that number from, I guess it was roughly 7 million to 9.7 million to build the station. The engine travels with the station, so, and that stayed the same at 1.2, but they travel together. And then finally, you've got, this is a brand-new request from Chief Nicholson, and that's to pave a parking lot, repave a parking lot for Station 1. And that's how we got our 19 million. And of course, these are for you to prioritize in the context of the 2040 UDO, comprehensive plan strike UDO. Whoops. Okay. I think I, I definitely advanced myself too much. There we go, administration. So, whoops. Yep. There we go. Slide 10. These are our general government projects, and it's the same rhythm to the table where you see the department, the requesting department is listed, the project itself is next to it, the dollar amounts, these are quotes as of December. And these are unfunded projects, no identified funding resource, but the need is there. Those of you that may or may not be familiar with enterprise resource planning or ERP, that's software trying to pull all our systems together, very big effort. Development Services, that is, that project is approved, and it is scheduled to start in FY '26 for Allison and her divisions. However, we have not identif, it's not started, and that's because, when you see the not started, it's because we don't have a funding source for it, and at that time, it was quoted at 4 million, so it may be adjusted, that number.
So if we turn that one down, she stays here, right?
That was obnoxious. No, no, she, she will still be with us.
I meant this building like permanently, like, well.
Oh.
We'll set up a clock for her.
She's probably growing out of her space.
The longer we wait, the more expensive it gets.
That's right, Ms. Curriton. Yes, ma'am. And so Park and Recreation, they probably have, for this year, out of the 16 new, they have the most capital requests. And so these are all new that Mr. Clowden and his team pulled together, and in, you can see the body of work there. And so Parks and Rec closes out, and then we have Public Works, Mr. Jeffrey Cato. That Public Works facility site study, some of you may be aware that our fleet and our registration and election staff have moved up 521. It's a new building that was former car dealership. So what Mr. Cato would like to do with the existing space is repurpose it and would like to do a site study to see how he could reuse what was formerly the fleet facility. And then finally, you may be familiar, or you may not, I know it's been a while, with the Joshua Tree Convenience Site. Last year, we came forward with the Irwin Farm Convenience Site and part of the Joshua Tree, and so Joshua Tree is still, you know, it is not started because we need the 1.1 to get it going. And so for general government, that's your 10.6 million. So next steps for you as a body. In April, we have the advertisement, the advertisement for the public hearing notice was in the Lancaster News. It appeared in the March 15, 16, Saturday, Sunday edition, so you would host your public hearing on April 15. And then also, at that time, you would do the exercise to, you know, think about these projects. If you need more information, we're happy to provide it, but what is the alignment to the 2040 comprehensive plan, and could, you know, these particular projects move us forward as a community or not move us forward? And then finally, we would ask, we would request action from you at that meeting, a vote on whether or not you would recommend or not recommend a prioritized list of projects for council to consider, and that would be council adopting a revision to the 10-year capital improvement plan in May as part of the FY '26 budget development process. Okay. This is our budget calendar. It lives on our website. It's the latter part of the calendar, and so we're quite busy this time of year. Our department heads just walked through presenting their department requests to Mr. Marstol the last few weeks, and now we're moving forward, beginning to have council review this information in April. And then we are, once we get a vote, or if we get a vote for, from you on April 15, it would move forward to council in the latter part of May. Any questions, thoughts? Woo. Okay. Here we go.
Okay. I guess, I probably have a lot of questions. I'm also remembering back some, from some key points from, I guess, a year ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Learned a lot from, you know, this process the first time around, and I guess what I was hoping for this time around was that there would be more involvement in what these projects are. So I hear that you said staff departments put in their requests. Can we add to this list, or what has been done to look at the county as a whole, or what are the greatest needs for the county? Or what are the greatest needs for the county? And why are we not using some of that money to help solve those problems? Because I'm not seeing, I mean, these are all important items, but are we solving the largest goals with that money? Which is, was my biggest disappointment last time, that a lot of the line items, are they needed? Absolutely. But are they solving what we're hearing from complaints some citizens are standing before us? And I don't know that we're doing that. The EMS stations, the fire, you know, improvements to our fire stations, all of that is obviously needed for safety. But I live off in Indianland. My biggest thing I hear about every single time is traffic. And there's not one line item anywhere in the county that I see where we're working on that. So my question is, why? So I understand that people are bringing, you know, all of the staff departments are bringing what they need, and those are valid needs, not to downgrade that. But this is the county's money, the citizens' money, and what are we doing with it? We haven't even talked about it until we're hearing your presentation. I didn't even realize this was on our, we were doing this this month until I looked at our agenda. And that's, you know, I thought we would have more involvement. Let's look at the comp plan and come up with these goals together. Otherwise, we're not involved in the process, and it seems a lot like it's just a rubber stamp to move on to the next step. And I feel like nothing was heard when I made these same points last year. And that's frustrating. So, and I'm not, you know, trying to say anything directly or to be, you know, it is very frustrating to hear, though, and I was hoping for a different process. So.
Yes, ma'am.
So you hear my frustrations, but can we add to this list? And are we taking a step back to looking at those larger needs? And how can we use that, these monies for that?
I can answer part of it. And I would like for you to help answer the, can they come up with their own projects? Because I know what the answer was in my previous jurisdictions, which was yes, they could. But I would like for y'all to help guide me on that. And as for the traffic and transportation side, absolutely, we hear you. We did try to offset that with the ballot measure that was turned down for the roads cost. We're not giving up on that. We just have to address it in a different way. Capital improvements are more about equipment and bigger programs. There are, there can be some parts that relate to road improvements, like the equipment and the things that Public Works needs. But the actual roads themselves, we have more needs than we can pay for in our capital improvements budget, for sure. So we need to look at other opportunities for that and allow the capital improvements to go forward with the projects that the law and the code specifically geared toward, in my opinion. Now, we, like I said, we're not giving up on the roads. We'll be asking for different opportunities for roads in the near future. But that's my explanation of where the transportation discussions are going. As you may or may not know, last year, we also asked for a transportation planner to help start up a plan. At this year's budget meeting with the council, they talked about creating a transportation plan to help move the county forward to doing better in where the roads go. One of the challenges we talked about is how we don't have control over where the roads go because they're all privatized right now. But that I see as a helpful step toward getting us to a more cohesive planning for that. That doesn't help with the rest of the part of your comments, and I understand that, and I understand your frustration. And it's totally valid. There's nothing invalid about what you said. But I wanted to tell you that for at least the transportation part. We hear about that so much that it is a priority and it's moving in different areas.
So I guess my response to that would be, well, it's been a year, and there hasn't been any movement. So if we keep just kicking the ball down the road, then it doesn't fix anything. We're not actually being proactive. We're being, you know, I want us, I want us to plan and do what we're sitting here to do. And this is just reactive, and we're looking at a list of what staff wants. And while they hear the needs daily, I feel like we have a larger responsibility to look back at the comp plan in the early stages, not just being reactive to the list that you're given by departments. But what are we looking to solve the needs of this county? And we haven't done that. I don't see that we've done that. Was there a meeting about that? Like, I'm just not, I'm not seeing that.
A meeting in terms of, yes, you are right, and I do hear your frustration with the processes, probably, no, there was not a formal meeting to, we have not been back to the planning commission since the last time, a year ago.
Well, not just us, but the community as a whole. We looked back at all of the public meetings we had during the comp plan, you know, stages, and looked at the feedback that the active participants gave. I mean, that would have been a starting point, or looking at minutes of all of our meetings and public comment to start a running list. I'm just, it just seems that there was no due diligence in doing it. So I'm having to have a hard time with this list. And I feel like we need to take a giant step back before we do anything.
Well, Ms. Harden, before you start, can I ask the question here that, one, to follow up with Ms., what Ms. Tinklinburg is saying around the traffic issue, I'd ask you, one, is, would you, if you can, elaborate to us about any kind of transportation department that exists now in Lancaster County? And then, two, and I'll state it for both of you here, that I do agree with her on the list here, that there's an EMS Station 3, right? EMS Station 6, a station, an engine, these types of things. Some of these are not very alliterative as to what we're actually going to be looking for as a priority. You know, just telling me you want to build an EMS station somewhere, I think maybe it would be helpful, and you don't have to really answer a question on my second part here as much as that if, I think it might be advantageous to everyone up here if we had some more context as to what is actually being presented here to us.
And I keep, I'm harping on transportation because that's in my district, but that is not my only concern. We have many goals in the comp plan where we discussed last year, using this budget to help realize some of those goals. So I was hoping, when you came before us this time, that we would see that put into action. And it's on the agenda for next time to discuss. So it's not just traffic, it's all of the goals of the comp plan, and what are we actively working on to help meet those?
Jason, you ready?
And one more thing. I'm just gonna harp on, because Commissioner Tinklinburg, she nailed it in terms of many of the things that I was gonna ask. But one of the things I see here is that, one of the things that we were approved, which I don't even think was in the budget for us to approve, but there's a Public Works PW facility site study, which is gonna have to happen after you've already acquired the building. That makes no sense to me.
If I may clarify on behalf of Mr. Cato. So the facility, the site study does not have to do with where they moved, up the street to 521 in the car dealership. The site facility has to do with repurposing the space that they're moving from. So Fleet Maintenance currently has a garage here. They're moving out. What are we doing with the existing space? And so Mr. Cato wants to repurpose it so we have more space for staff.
Thank you. And then I have a question about, when you answer a question about, like, combining sources. So you talked about millage, and you talked about impact fees, like, is there a combination of those that?
Absolutely. You're not limited in, you're not limited in, okay, we'll borrow for part of the project, and we may use savings to do the other half of the project. So you can do various and sundry combinations of borrowing, using cash. We need direction as staff as to what projects are important. And now we know what's important, so now please help by appropriating the dollars. So you're sitting with a list of needs, and that just, that we've had them, and some of them are new, some of them are existing. We have gone through an exercise, when we first developed the CIP back in 2021, there was a public comment exercise to make the plan come to life. So there was input at that point. But the revision piece is, I think, what you're more concerned about, when we want to make a revision to the plan, have we received public comment? But, so what I want to say is, let me not digress. But yes, you can use a variety of funding tools to get something on, to give something legs. But staff can't appropriate the dollars, and that's what, and we can't, and we can suggest a prioritization, but ultimately, we're looking at the planning commission and council to tell us, this is the order of things, these are the priorities, here's the money to go with it.
I have a question. You said that we could find, because if this is gonna be addressed at the next meeting in April, this is a lot of homework, and this is a lot of money.
Yes.
And it's not, it's not my money. It's the citizens' money, and I would like to be able to do my homework. And where can I find that information? I'm not familiar with the Joshua Tree. You know, I'm new to the committee. And I'd like to find out, you know, before this is brought in and not being addressed, you know, I don't want it just to go up and just say, just like I said, these are, these are big numbers. And I would like to be able to have a educated guess. I mean, an educated group conscious with everybody on board, and, you know, I'd like to be able to do my homework.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Ms. Hinson. We do have project scope sheets by project as submitted by each department director. And so you would see what the scope is, and we're happy to provide that to this body to help aid the decision-making process. And also, on the website, there is the capital improvement plan, the 2022, 2031, capital improvement plan lives on the website. And there are project sheets that live there as well. So you could get sharp on the projects that have already been approved, and then, you know, we could provide you, me, and staff can provide you with the actual request sheet so you could get sharp on it.
And so I'll reiterate my point again, that just having a list here that says there's money to spend that's gonna have to, or money that has to be spent here, I think, to her point, and to Ms. Tinklinburg, to be able to see some context around some of these things that, for instance, when it's Development Services, and I'll pick on Ms. Harden with this one there, that the, that if, you know, Development Services building office space is gonna provide us with a better traffic plan, a department who can come forward with a real plan that helps produce the money to get it done, is gonna be much more effective for us behind the board here.
Is it my turn to answer the questions yet?
Please, Ms. Harden. We stacked too many on you on one time there.
If I can go backwards. The capital improvement project, and I'll take responsibility for not briefing the new members on CIP process, because this, I should have done this back in January, February, so my apologies. The capital improvement process is intended, or capital improvement planning, but is intended for major project items. It is not allowed to be personnel. So capital improvements have to be things that you can own and hold. They are typically purchases that would distort the operating budget of the county if they were all purchased at the same time. Like, fire trucks can be upwards of $2 million, and we may need a dozen at a time. So we put that on capital improvement planning so that the money that is in the capital improvement budget can be used over time to acquire those. It's money that's set aside, it's not required to be used, like the general fund is required to be used every year, and then you lose that money. So it's in a special saving, for lack of a better term, it's in a special savings area. And that money is set there, and it has to be used for those purposes. The reason that it comes to you at all is because the state law requires that any capital improvement planning is reviewed by the planning commission before it goes to council. And every year, the capital improvement plan is updated with the new CIPs for the coming year. The money that is there is based on what we have left over, is leftover a good word? Or what we have in funds, what we have in funds that are capital-related, and it varies from year to year.
I just have a comment. I think what is confusing me the most about this, and this was the same last year, is when you look at what other areas or municipalities, cities do with their CIP money, they're very large projects, and all of the money is used to realize a goal that dramatically affects the people in the community. And that is not what I see done here. It's what I spoke on before. We have a laundry list of little things, and they're needed things. But I guess the struggle is, the people look this up because it's public information, and they're thinking, well, how am I benefiting from this? I still have all of these needs. They don't have a way to be heard, and they're, they can't see it. So it's frustrating, because we do have great needs for road improvements, not just in Indianland, but the growth out, out where you are. There's just so much need. And I realize we have SCDOT roads, but we also have county roads. And there's housing issues, and I just, there's so much large project needs that it's frustrating that not, there's not a single large project allocated on this list.
Let me give you a little bit of backstory about small projects. The community where I came from, we had years where we had a lot of capital money available, and we had large projects. Even then, we couldn't accommodate a large ocean outfall, like the one that's being built right now off of 24th Avenue North in Myrtle Beach for 40-something million dollars. But we did have money to pay for smaller street improvements or street end improvements for drainage, a million-dollar project. We could do that. There were some years where all we could do was patch the roof of the swimming pool. And we had less than a million dollars to expand for an entire community on the coast. And our planning commission looked at the staff and said, you're ridiculous if you think that I'm gonna try and prioritize repairing the swimming pool roof with getting an extra locker for the police department when none of these projects are over $100,000. They're all maintenance, just let it go. And so for the years that all we had were maintenance, the planning commission said, we're okay with however staff does it, gave a great approval to it because we had a section of our comp plan that said, we want our community facilities to be kept up. And that's how it tied under there. So it's not every year that we have a lot of money. We'll have different pots of money in different years.
Yes. I do want to speak to the roads piece and how roads are particularly funded. I'll speak on behalf of Mr. Cato. But we have dedicated funding sources for county and state paving projects. We have the road improvement fee. And so we use that money for paving and preserving roads. We have, it's state funds out of our transportation committee, it's called the C program. So SCDOT does give money towards specific road paving and projects. We're also using capital project sales tax 2 and 3 to do road projects. So I don't want you to walk away thinking we're not working on roads. What you have in front of you are projects that are out there, then they are needs, and they have been vetted by staff. And we are trusting that, you know, we have to trust the process a little bit, that staff are subject matter experts, they have a good idea of what the needs are, and that, but these truly are projects that, what do, how do we fund them?
Sure.
So, and, you know, and, I mean, if you don't, you know, that's the, that's the major problem for, and it's not a problem, but that's the question, is, here's what we have, some of it's been on the books for a while, the books, so to speak, the CIP. Some of it is new. How do we fund this? So, but I didn't want you to walk away with the thought that roads are not being properly handled, because there are dedicated special revenue sources for paving and preserving state and county roads in the area.
Sure. I do know that our needs far surpass those funds, though, which is why it was on the ballot this past November, but unfortunately, it failed. So that does still tell me that we have a great need. Our need is larger than what we have. So I do still think that this could be a source to help that situation. I don't think that we probably have enough money to go and do a major road widening, but we would perhaps be able to help some of the safety concerns on 521 and add turn lanes or make improvements for safety. There are so many smaller projects that would help roads. I'm not just saying this has to be a large road project, but to not see any of it, when we stand up here and hear applicant after applicant that drives 40 minutes from Indianland to be heard, and we're doing nothing about it, I don't know what to say to them. So it's... So it's, that's all I'll say.
No, I do, I, again, I want to speak on behalf of Jeff Cato because there is action in this area. It's just that it hasn't identified funding source, the roads. These particular projects that are before you, again, I, you know, we don't have a funding source for. Roads, we have a funding source for.
Let me back that up. That's not something that we can fix here on this board. It's already something outside of our authority.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we don't need to beat on it anymore? Like, it is, it is frustrating to all of us, because I agree with Ms. Tinklinburg, that we're not getting anywhere when people come in and gripe about the roads, and we gripe about the roads. And how many times have y'all heard me complain about the crosswalk in front of the middle school on 521 with kids dancing across the street at 3:00 and 1/2 noon? Nobody's hearing me or doing anything about it.
And we do have, as part of Capital Project Sales Tax III, additional money that we will bank in the current Capital Project Sales Tax III for Mr. Cato and his staff to address roads. He also has the proviso. But I'm not the subject matter expert on roads. Please hear that. The list that you have before you, where we need help and where we need your brain power, is that these are needs that have been identified, they do not have funding sources. What do you all feel is important, based on the context of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan? And, you know, and this will hopefully help Council direct us in how to fund some of these things.
All right. And for that point, I'll say it again, that some context behind these things, because specifically like Ms. Tinklinburg, if there was one of these that she can find in here that's going to support as a capital project, buying a building for, for a public, I can't get it out, for Planning Services, that if that is an institute that pushes, you know, our ability to get, and it's not because of, you know, we had somebody show up, it's that there's now a place that they can do it. If there's something to that, and we can have context in this added in, so we can see those things, those are going to add a lot of fuel for, as her opinion, that traffic needs to be dealt with, and she's tired of not hearing a solution forward or seeing an option out here. All of a sudden, now there's something that does give us an opportunity to say, well, this one really is important, that we can fuel better school, expansion of schools, or we can fix roads, that these things will be an availability because of, we bought a building for the team to work in. I know that's not a perfect answer, Ms. Tinklinburg, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to stomp on you about it at all. Please take my apologies.
But that means...
But that, that, I think we need context to some of them would really help. So, and Ms. Kirigan has been waiting very patiently, or Ms. Henson, y'all pick which one.
I'm just curious, and I just want to make sure I'm hearing this clearly. I see all of these under, it says unfunded, 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 but then I heard you say that we had a special savings. Is that like a prudent reserve? Is that something, is that...
It's my comments, it's my common word for a very, much more complex fund.
Yeah, we would, if I may, so one way to fund a project is with our reserves and savings. So we just can't do that without being directed by Council. So there are a number of ways to fund unfunded projects. Staff needs the money appropriated and the revenue source appropriated, so we can move forward with the project. So savings, cash, is what we term unassigned fund balance. And so, but it's, I mean, it can be used for one-time things per our fund balance policy. It's just that we don't have the, we need the appropriation.
Is that something that we could also find out with, if I came in and asked for more information, or is that something we could find on the website? I'm assuming that's...
Well, the, for instance, yeah, through the audit, and the Council talked about fund balance and appropriation of money at the last meeting. And they talked about some, using some of the fund balance to address a certain need. I can't even remember the name of it, but I remember. Bales Trail. And they made recommendations on two projects to whether to use the fund balance or not. The fund balance has, has to stay at a certain level. It can't go any lower. The fund balance backs up our debt assessment, the way, how much we can borrow, backs up our credit rating so that we can get a better rating on the bonds, backs us up internally in case we have a calamity, in case we get hit with a hurricane helene, and we have some funds to pull from for that. So there is a certain amount under which we can't go for that, so 28% of the, thank you. We can't go lower than that. But if we have more than that, the Council has an opportunity to either save it and go forward, or spend it, or use it to buy down debt. And they can, they have all these opportunities. We talk about it during the budget. It comes up during the meetings that they hold. And Jamie and Sabrina and team do a great job of explaining that during that timeframe, so much so that the only reason I know this is because I've listened to them. So I feel very confident that I'm getting the information from a good source. In my previous experience, my, our capital improvements planning was done very much on a slim review process, because we didn't know until December how much money was going to be available in the capital improvement fund. And we would go to Planning Commission in March, because we spent January and February, or the staff did, coming up with things that would meet these requirements of the comp plan. And coming up with projects that they needed, or rehashing projects that didn't get funded in previous years that still were needed. Can we get this on the list? And they would come to, and the community I came from, the staff actually came to the Planning Commission and made their cases. Those were very long meetings. The Planning Commission came up with a better process later on, after they stumbled out at 11 o'clock too many times one, at night. But I'm digressing. Now I'm just storytelling, so I need to stop. There were more questions. What question haven't I answered yet?
I don't have a question, but I do have a request to our chairman. Is there a possibility that we could get time, then the individual scope projects, then the amount of the reserve of above the 28% that we have to keep, and then an opportunity to talk about the items from the comp plan that we think need to be included?
And I think I can answer that question, that at our next workshop, we should have that information available.
We can make that available, although the reserve part is not a part of the CIP. That is a, that's a, the Council pot of money to deal with. But we can have the information, what I gave to you last year. It wasn't very well received, but let me repeat what it is in case there's been a change of mind. I had each project listed and each department, and then I put a crosswalk on that, onto which sections of the comp plan it met. Which projects under the comp plan, or which line item goals under the comp plan would be met by each one of these projects. And there were some of them that came to the top by answering five or six or seven of the comp plan goals, and some of them didn't answer any. Then I also crosswalked it with the strategic plan that the Council adopts every five years, which gives them a focus on where there, some projects they would like to run that's Council-driven. And I crosswalked both of those, so that I knew, we knew at the time, if you took the spreadsheet and you just identified which ones had the most in column A and which ones had the most in column B, then you knew the ones that would fit the most goals from the comp plan, the strategic plan.
I think that was a great effort to organize.
I'm a spreadsheet queen. If you would like...
Let me ask, Ms. Kirigan, is that ineffective, getting you...
Yeah, I think that would give us some direction. I just, I think there are some larger overarching themes that hopefully will be addressed in that thing. Yeah, what, I can, I can amend how it was put together, so that it's easier to digest, because I had a big spreadsheet, and it was, it was hard to deal with, I'm sure. Sorry about that.
I have a thought. Thank you. I know that, I'm not trying to attack. I think that it's, it's one thing to be reactive to this list and then place it in the category that makes sense in the comp plan, and it's quite another to proactively try to solve the problems that we have in the county and look at the goals that we have in the comp plan, and what can we, how can we creatively solve those problems by utilizing this budget? And we didn't do that, and that's my holdup with this, because part of our responsibilities in the Planning Commission is to do that. I don't want to just be reactive. So if we can have some, along with that workshop, have points to discuss those things, and not just look at the list and let's allocate it to what's already there, that's nice. It would look pretty on your spreadsheet, but I want us, you know, to try to come up with something as well, and maybe next year, we need to be and start this process earlier.
May I make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, to you?
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I would recommend that we set up a subcommittee for CIP, and you have the members assigned at the next meeting, not the, not the workshop at the meeting. And we set a quarterly meeting in July, in September, and then in January, to prepare for and plan ahead for the CIP when it comes, when the money comes, well, when we know how much money we have, and near the end of December, early January, and be better prepared for it next year. That would help staff in getting the Planning Commission a little bit more involved early on, so that we'll have time to talk about projects that the Planning Commission might like to see. We could spread that around to the staff. We could put in, we could help guide projects that could be, or help provide guidance where projects fit the comp plan. That committee could also come up with ideas on comp plan projects that we could put into our own budget for the following year.
I'll take that as under advisement.
That's all it is, is advice. And it cost exactly what you just paid for it, so.
It was good advice.
I have a question.
Ms. Lou.
Without getting into detail on each one of these projects, I just have a question on the airport, the 12,000, it says unfunded. And my question is, that's, is the airport not a commercial enterprise? And can this, part of this money not come from the people who use the airport?
It's, it is a proprietary fund, it is an enterprise fund, but it doesn't pull in as much. I'm probably speaking out of turn. It doesn't, it's not 100% cost recovery, where it pulls in what it pushes out. Does that make sense? It doesn't bring in enough revenue to actually pay for the gas, the steel gas tanks. Those are a million dollars for, to store gas for planes.
I'm just asking, people have to pay to use the airport, I'm assuming?
Mm-hmm.
And as with everything else, the price of goods and services goes up. And why can not some of that million dollars be passed on to the people who actually use the airport, instead of those of us who don't use it, paying for it?
Because the community benefits as a whole from the commercial entities that use that operation and use the airport. There are not a lot of airports in the United States that actually make their entire budget solely off of the finances that they bring in. My experience in other jurisdictions is that even ones you think are cash-rich are still pulling money out of the community's budget for, for operations and the like. So it's, we'll, we'll definitely ask before, and have some answers at the workshop for you, but I'll just give you my little window of the world.
Taking that civics class, good or bad thing for you, because having been there and hearing, I don't recall how many flights a day there are, but I'm just sitting here doing a little bit of math, thinking, yes, it's not going to recover a million dollars in a year, but even 50% commercially funded. And yes, I understand your point about, we benefit from it. Indianland and Lancaster County benefits from me doing all my shopping in Indianland, but no one is subsidizing me. So I just have sincere questions about a million dollars for gas tanks to fund people who want to keep their plane there and fly to the Bahamas for the weekend. And that was what was going on when I was there. I didn't pull that out of the air. I know there's a lot of corporate planes and things, and we benefit from that, but that's where I would just like to know if there's any way that can be brought down and part of that cost be borne by the people who actually use it.
We'll ask.
I'd encourage the airshow. That was a lot of fun.
What's that?
They had an airshow.
Oh.
It was a lot of fun.
Charge more for them to go in. There you go.
Bus rides across the street and everything. Anything else, Ms. Jamie?
No, but thank you very much for your great questions and being engaged. And we'll follow up with Project Scope, so you get more informed, and be back in April to do the exercise. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
I'm curious about this one, the UDO workshop report. Oh, that's great news.
So the UDO workshop that was going to be held before the COW, the last meeting, did not end up being held. The COW meeting was diverted to introducing the Council to the new module. It turns out that the work that was done prior to that, by giving the Council chapters of Module II separately, allowing them to provide content to the staff directly, negated the need for a in-person back-and-forth on Module IV at the COW. And it's good, too, because an hour and a half of the two hours was taken up by other discussions. So our consultant had 30 minutes with the Council, which they made very good use of. I have to say, they got answers to the big questions, which are great. So then, the UDO Subcommittee Meeting Agenda that went out today talks about looking at the definitions, and that's what we'll go next. Staff is going to be looking at, at the same time, staff is looking at the Administration Section, so that we have better-prepared questions and comments when the UDO Committee and the UDO comes back to you and Council for the Administration, because the Administration Section has a lot of challenges in that, how we do things and how we order things, has had a lot of input over the years from a lot of different folks. And so we want to make it the best we can.
Nothing to report.
Oh, come on, man.
All right, one last one.
It's not like I get paid by the word.
Thanks for staying on top of it. So Board Member of the Year nominations discussion.
I'll address that. Annually, Council provides us with a form that they ask us to fill out, that each board to fill out, nominating a member of the board as Board Member of the Year. We will, we can discuss, if you want to discuss nominations tonight, you can, or we can discuss them at the workshop. If you know, if you have those discussions, then you can be prepared at the April meeting to make the actual nomination. We'll have the form prepared to sign. We're just giving you a heads-up tonight, that that is, that is coming. Please consider who you would like to nominate. We can discuss it at workshop and at, and at the next, at the April meeting, and we'll have the form to sign then. That will then go to Council. They have a vote. Person is chosen, but all the nominees are invited to a dinner that Council gives in their honor in June, so.
I'm going to go on record and say that I'm going, I would like to nominate, and we can discuss this at workshop, Commissioner Tinklinburg.
I'm sorry, I can't, can you...
Yes, I would like to go on record to put Commissioner Tinklinburg's name forth, and we can talk about that at workshop. Yes.
And this is only... I was going to say the exact same thing.
Oh, lovely.
And I was going to say, it's only my second meeting, but if you nominate me, I get to go to the dinner.
Well, since we're not going to take a vote on it, that concludes all the agenda items. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Wait, I got one more thing.
Never mind.
I do, sorry. We talked about having regular updates on the comp plan back when we actually finalized the comp plan and put it forth, and I, even though I took the four-month hiatus, have not heard an update on the comp plan, which then lent itself to this conversation about the, the budget, the CIP. So I think that coming back to that makes sense, and we need to plan it and stay on top of those updates.
Updates for the comp plan?
Yeah, updates from the comp plan, yes.
Anybody else? That's all the items. So I hear a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, I second.
Or adjourn.
Sheila.
Everybody.
Yoki. Everybody.
I got babies to get into.
I know.
Does anybody...